Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the July 15th meeting of the Palm County Commission. We'll start off with a board member role call.
Tim Winchester.
John Bushy.
Greg Miller.
David Powell.
Stacy Boxer.
Is anybody on?
You know, we got it.
Alright, so um. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna approve some minutes. We have three sets of minutes for the approval. We postponed two. We postponed the minutes from June 3rd. The minutes from June 17th. And we're gonna need to approve those.
Do you have extra copies of this?
Um, I don't have copies of them.
They're in the file. Yeah.
Too long a photo. Can you get copies of the 3rd and the 17th?
Yeah, we want to look at that now.
I just need to see them just to see who was here.
Yeah, just want to revise.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah.
I don't want to approve something, I don't even know what I'm approving.
Yeah, yeah.
Lucky I can remember last week.
Nor here, that might affect whether we have a form.
Yeah, the 3rd I wasn't here, so. On 17th, I mean, I was gone on, so. Trying to remember.
Those print heads, you want to circle back for that?
Yeah. So our most recent minutes are from July 1st, our last meeting.
Yep.
And we have a few other.
I have two small changes that I would suggest. There's a whole section on page two, there's a paragraph break, and in the first paragraph after that, it says, "A lack of a elementary school is discussed and the possibility of losing the school to Bennington." We already lost the school.
Yeah, we lost the school.
So just being clear that we have lost the school. And also, the idea of a charter school as Bennington has, I think we were referring to North Bennington.
Right, in Independence. So if we can make that change, I did say charter during the meeting.
So the North Bennington?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But actually, what it is, is an independent school.
Independent, yeah.
Want to make that change on this or not?
Sure.
Yeah, you just make that motion.
Independent.
Yep.
Just make it as a motion to change those.
Yeah.
And then somebody could second that.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st with those two changes.
Those two changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Or we'll show to.
Yeah.
We have a forum of people who are here.
Yep.
We'll have to see if we got a forum of those people for the other two.
Yeah, we have four. It was only four for that, so.
Yeah, but various people were not here during various meetings.
Yeah, we didn't have a quorum of people to approve the previous meeting. Right, the previous one was. The one previous to that was the one where they missed a piece of it, but they've pieced together enough a bit that I'm good with it.
So that was uh, that was June 7th.
Yeah, June 17th was the last minute.
Those are the 3rd.
June 17th.
So the 7th.
3rd and 7th.
Greg Miller. John Bushy, Tim Winchester, Stacy Boxer was here, yeah.
The what, this one was that?
That was the 3rd, yeah. There you go. Three of us, four of us, yes.
Everybody's here.
Greg.
Yep.
How about caps, sir? Everyone has a cap like us.
A cap?
Cap.
Oh, I guess we're in the capless.
Oh, yeah.
We need a panel.
We need a panel.
Panel caps, yeah.
And the 3rd and the 7th.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would move to approve the minutes of the 3rd.
Second. We're all here.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, you seconded it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's the 3rd.
And I would move to approve the minutes of the 17th.
Yep.
Second. And they have enough there now, too. They got four of it.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. And I abstain.
That's good.
Very good. Clean them up, caught up. Hey, they're rolling.
Alright, that brings us to our main part of our meeting. This is giving the town. Those are the only copies we have, so we can't make marks on them.
Okay.
But we can. We had something from last.
Erasable marker?
Like that. Got one, right? Yeah.
This is from my June 3rd thing.
Yeah, that's June.
Those are the landers' maps, well. Those are the show.
As a show, sure enough.
Don't show sure on that one.
This shows it through the final village.
I have another copy of those.
It goes pretty far north.
Yeah, we have a copy of these map.
I don't.
That came, that was in the stuff that came from Sam from.
Right, oh, there it is.
Okay, I got it, never mind. I was like, I knew I had a paper.
That was with these.
Alright. I could share with Jimmy.
Good, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, you look at it.
This is.
You understand what this is about, the hash marks alone?
Now, is this down in Pineville?
Yeah, this is for uh, yeah, here's, it's okay for sewer.
15 acres of that lot.
So this is an area, this is an area, an extension, yeah.
Okay, okay.
If I want to add to it, we could add to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which. This was BRC, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can tell you.
This is Pettit.
This section, maybe, right?
That's where they were going to build that restaurant, right here.
Yeah.
Race track.
That's a race track, okay.
This is a good.
Definitely that map. We're here, we're about.
Trailer park, what is this?
Yeah, it's a trailer park. Jackson Cozy Meadows.
Jackson Crossing.
Residential case, sewer extensions.
And they saw it went up there, you know, that was for in case that the trailer park down here went bad, they were going to move up there.
Who's my neighbor?
That's why they put the septic up there.
They do not run sewer line.
And it runs down Cedar Hill.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right there.
But nobody's on it, saying you could tap into it, but it's already there, yeah.
There's that house right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it goes up there, Roger.
This goes up to Crow.
Main. That's. That Cedar Hill says it's a proposed forced main. Does anybody know what that means?
What is it?
Well, no.
Coming down, it's supposed to have, because those electronic things are there? You know those things, you know those things that stick out of the ground? About 18 inches, that's.
I guess not.
That alerts them. This says it's a proposed sewer force main, and I don't know, so that sounds like it's not there.
It's not there.
Yeah, there's nothing there right now.
No, okay. It ends with me.
So how does it get from here to the processing plant?
This one is.
It's got to go down here. This is all downhill. To 346. This is, see, here's the school, here's Jackson Crossing, you know, this is all up in here. Yeah, there's the town office. So where's the line that brings us to the processing plant? Uh, it says proposed, so that's.
Well, definitely not clear. Is there anything on the other page?
Yeah, solid line down here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's North Pond Road, okay.
Yeah.
So this would be the line, because this should, this should be, yeah, that's Cedar Hill, that's where it goes down.
Because I've seen those things, okay.
That's where that line does go.
Yeah.
Down Cedar Hill.
Yes.
It goes down Cedar Hill, hits 346 and along the right inside.
And then there's another 340 something pumping station there?
Yeah, since the pumping station along the way down through.
Where are we here?
So you're going to North Palm.
So here's 346. Okay.
What's Cedar Hill?
Sure, yes, Cedar Hill. Okay, so it's coming down here. And it goes through and connects it.
And then the plant, they're here.
And then there's other sewage coming this way.
The lagoons are right there.
Yeah.
And I think this area over here, they had for a backup for another lagoon.
That's the trailer park here, right?
No, this is the treatment plant.
That's the treatment plant. Okay, I got you. Yeah, yeah.
This is the line that comes in from over here, all the way over here, the line comes in. This line comes down, hooks in.
They went all the way down Palm Mountain to get to you, right?
Yeah, yeah.
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 I'm going to see next one here. Okay, so that's the.
Race track, yeah. And this is the proposed extension.
Oh, this is not proposed?
Okay, so that's this extension there.
But this is not serviced. Because crosses their main street.
Yes, that's where they had to cross the river. Right now, they're, they're, it doesn't cross the river right now, so it's only, it doesn't take up all the stuff.
It's not on this side here.
Why is this drawn this way? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Sewer service area limits, okay, this is the limit they're saying.
I think some of the river road has.
The river road does have some septic, up to Terry Pollard's, I think.
And they bypassed Swallow Hill.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
They skipped over Swallow Hill.
Where these lines are right here.
Valley View.
Where these black lines are right there, is where it's at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Existing, yeah. So we, on my road, if we wanted to do it, we'd have to pay for the.
Yeah. By your own Swallow Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But this isn't, this is a, the whole, it's a proposed, it's okay for sewer extension.
So what we were trying to do was think about if we wanted to expand where the commercial zone would be, right, so that they could get potentially, we can think long term around extending the sewer.
Which this is all extended area, too.
I think we're gonna lose this.
This is the racetrack?
We're gonna lose this as an industrial zone.
Is this the racetrack?
Yeah, that's a racetrack, and it's gonna be, you know, tied up forever.
Depends on what they.
Out to bid.
Depends on what the state's here.
Well, the state's already made a statement. When the court, they find them $200 and $20,000.
They got a fence around the stadium.
So, but they. They just put up a fence and everything, they're gonna put it all around the bit.
It's up for sale, it's in commercial real estate for like $4 million.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Who's gonna pay that?
It's also in flood areas, so I'm saying we're gonna lose that as an industrial zone.
Well, it looks like it might go bankrupt. That's the thing that he's gonna do.
If it gets cleaned up, I mean.
Oh, it'd be good, yeah.
Depends on what people want to put in.
Right.
They're gonna, obviously, it's in a flood zone, so you don't want to say, hey.
Well, summertime stuff, you know, concerts or whatever, you know, whatever.
Good things, yeah.
Campgrounds, beautiful campgrounds, river and whatever.
It'd be a great campground and park.
Didn't we just have a problem with flooding?
Well, we did. If it really didn't flood.
This was awful in Irene.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The river was terrible. I've never, I lived over there my whole life. And never seen it go over the road.
Yeah.
Except for Irene.
Irene, it was a hole.
Yeah, and it was fast here. But it wasn't, it flooded out here, but it didn't go, you know, anything serious.
Nothing serious.
So Bee Hill. I'm interested by these funny little carve outs here.
This is where Arnold Paxton, right? Like Brooke, you read it for me. Arnold Paxton.
This is a motel.
Okay, oh, that's the motel.
That's the motel. And in back of it.
No, that's Bee Hill, that's uh.
That'd be over.
Okay, Bee Hill, yeah.
That's right next to it.
Yeah, that's mine.
This is Jimmy's.
Put your, close your pens. You're not supposed to mark this up.
I bet you, yeah.
Yeah, this is Jimmy's place right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's Jimmy, I'm sorry?
3 acres.
Oh, of course.
It's Jimmy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So this is the lab hotel.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is that connected?
Yeah, because this is, yeah, this is the corner right there.
So this line came all the way down?
This is not the line, the line is somewhere.
It doesn't go.
The top, that line.
Ends right there.
It's here.
Yeah.
How does it connect to the pump center?
See.
There's a pump right down in here.
And it runs.
Well, how does it connect to North Palm then?
Hmm, just, just a pump, that's all it is.
I think it goes this way up through, we're in this line.
As far as stop before you get to Macmolden. Then Cedar Hill's way over down here.
Yeah, where's the connection?
Yeah, where's the connection right here?
What's this say?
Forced main.
So this looks like they're, they're bringing along 346.
It's going right along next to Macmolden, but not.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't hook to Macmolden yet.
No.
They don't, they don't have it yet.
But it could.
It can be, right.
It could be, yeah, if they choose, ask for it, you know, they're gonna pay for it, but.
Yeah, but then, yeah, then it shoots straight down the road.
Yeah.
So. Cedar Hill is. Here's now 46, so this is where it's coming up here. It's flowing downhill this way and it's going that way. Oh, right, there's the.
It's going that way.
Yeah, I would have turned around.
Yeah, you could put that down here, I guess.
See, the thing is, this, they have it only as these sections. This is still going uphill right here. So this could be, there's houses that are still right here, all the way up to the corner farm right here, or actually, by the way, up to here. Corey Hill can go back down to here, you could connect, there's not many houses, but you can connect there. In this corner right here, you can connect this back down.
The houses that were there presumably have septic tanks, and so the cost of putting a sewer line in there, who would pay for that? I mean, they're already filled with it. It's only if somebody wants to develop something that that becomes interesting.
Rural residential, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They've got bigger lots, so what, 2 acres?
I mean, there's locations to still get in if we make, if we become young to do it.
Yeah. So like, okay, where's the American Legion, for instance?
Legion's right here.
So that's already in, but that's not in our industrial zone or our commercial zone?
Well, we don't have an actual commercial zone.
Right. There, there's like lands along the sides of the highway, Route 7 and stuff, that there is a 50 foot right away in certain areas that have commercial area.
The sewers in this? They're way down past.
Yeah, and it's not a.
Which is something I think we need to expand on and make it commercial.
This is going to be a hill. It'd be a major pump to develop. Bee Hill, right?
Oh, yeah.
Some of that will come down with gravity fed.
Yeah, you could come down.
Okay. So we are.
But I don't think we're really looking at, I, well, maybe I'm wrong. I didn't think we were looking at expanding the sewer lines right now so much as just looking for where we might think development would make sense.
Yeah.
And development, first of all, makes sense where we already have at least near access for the sewer line. So where are those areas that aren't currently developable?
Right, but if Darcy is saying, it's that, you know, we can't hook up anymore, then that's a problem.
Well, yeah.
But if we expand.
But if we're talking about, you know, thinking about the future, where are the places where development could happen? And we want it to be at least nearby this, so that, you know, if it was worth it to spend the money, I don't know if it would be, that it would be possible.
And we have to know what kind of money we're talking about. We're talking about a half a million or 10 million, you know.
But the developer would be paying that, you know, or be a partnership or something, you know. I mean, we'd pick up some if we were going to get a lot of tax grants from it or something like that, but.
But if a developer comes in, they might want to know, what am I talking about to hook into this?
And, and we can play a thousand scenarios and we wouldn't guess the right answer.
Yeah, it's not really, it's not really our job to do those details.
I know, but we should get some idea what it's gonna cost to upgrade this.
Right, but well, so we don't need to know.
Otherwise, we keep using the word upgrade, but we have no idea what that entails.
But I, I don't think, well, I'm just gonna say, I don't, for our job, we don't have to know what it's gonna cost us to do it. We just need to find places that I think are gonna connect or would be able to connect. Down the road, that's up to an investor or somebody else to come up with that.
I think part of our conversation was looking for places where we want to extend or expand, right, the village centers.
Right, that was the key.
Right, and that was a grant to tax. Contingent on sewer for certain.
Certain.
Right, right. Some of the developer.
I've often looked at the place. Village Center lines now, because I think that is what we were talking about, maybe expanding those lines.
Yeah.
These are here. So we have these.
Why don't I turn this, so we can put all three on there?
Is that one? Right there.
Yeah.
Um, you know. The, this is dark.
Yeah, this one right here.
Our village.
Yep, so that's pretty much top there, already here, is that all of this? And what's, I'm sorry, pink is village, okay.
Right, that's looking.
Purple is village center. Is there a difference?
Purple enterprise, it's like. See, 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 there's Macmolden building.
Right.
Up there. We would need a copy of this stuff, we can.
Yeah.
Some sort of highlight in here. Yeah, we need, we definitely need a couple more cut.
Well, we can make a copy, right? Oh, does that thing scan, that thing printer? I don't know if it does.
It's the first time I've used it tonight. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I think.
I've seen somebody else have it.
Well, they could shoot, they could, they'll shoot this to make it out of paper, this for.
Yeah, because we're generally wanting to do an overlay.
Right.
So you want some smaller copies like that?
Well, I mean, plus, you don't want it so dark that we can't read. You don't want it so dark that we can't read on the.
Right, right.
I think we just want to highlight the outline, kind of like this.
If we could have them scaled the same, then we could flop it down on top on a transparency and you can say, okay, what's the what's the other?
I don't know. So the little one that you have is the same, same thing as the big ones. In your hand.
They're semi, yeah. You know what, the pictures are the same, but. BRC probably has all of this.
They might have this.
You know?
They could.
And I bet you we could ask them to give us
Yeah.
A map of the sewer with an overlay of the village district, and that would make our journey a lot easier.
Yeah, they should be able to.
So can we ask BRC if they can give us a copy of our sewer map and overlay of the village district or vice versa, it doesn't matter.
Sewer.
Yeah.
That's village district?
Yeah, that's what we're, that was the question we were trying to answer, was where we can expand the village district.
Yes.
And this is a little hard to gather here, you know, where I am.
Yeah, because like on this one here, this is Palm center here, this, no, this is.
Track.
Up here, so right here on this one. And I, and I know this, again, we got roads that go, that come downhill to all these things.
Yeah.
That there's, there's a good gravity fed. There's a lot of places that you could add, and that would make more land to usable. Whether the people, whether the people sell them or not, that's up to that, but it's, it would make more land usable because we have a lot of downflowing areas.
And that's a development thing.
Right.
Not a village center thing necessarily, right?
But it's, it's available to make our villages, you could expand those village sizes.
Yeah, if somebody wanted to put in an old folks home with 60 units.
Right.
Well, let's go uphill from this.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
That's what it is, like saying Bee Hill, all the ones that run off the hillside, those are coming down.
Right.
But there's land, so what happened with this here to here? South Palm, yeah, right here, so across from the leaves in here, this is where Pet Paul's written here. So back when the last ordinance and stuff was written, or not ordinance, but the last bylaws were written, this was only a 50 foot setback right here.
Uh huh.
And that's all the scissors from the road is 50 foot, okay? There's a big section of land.
10 acres.
That could be used, but they never put it in at that. They just said 50 foot is all we want. We could, you could shoot this back 200 foot and give yourself a lot of.
It's all downhill, yeah.
Everything that would be a great.
On the hillside.
That's why what they did is, because it was only 50 foot.
Yeah.
Um, they bought some of the piece of land behind it on residential and put the building there, because they couldn't fit it in the 50 foot commercial.
Of course.
So that was, that was, that was an issue I know they're running into right there.
Yeah.
And that's how they got around it, by buying land up. Put it all on the hillside. They just flattened the hill up there and put it in. But if we expand some of those sides, make it.
Yeah, because that's kind of like a gentle slope.
Yeah.
There.
It's pretty steep slope, actually, I mean.
These areas are.
I don't know if there's any like, is there any like too steep in terms of?
Not that it'd be too steep, but I don't want you on deck.
The only place next to the Ponto View Barn, that, that's ten acres out there, twenty percent. Pat Bar tried to buy it and put his pool place here and they did deny it. So they owned a lot next to the Ponto View Barn, which they put the cows out and Berington, you know, but you can't do anything with it.
Again, no, that's rules that were in place then, we can.
Why not?
Change some rules that. Again, it doesn't mean somebody's gonna sell it. Having the ability to be able to is what, what we're looking at.
Why wouldn't they allow that?
The grade is twenty percent.
That's too steep. Okay, so there is a too.
Well, that was, again, rules that were in place back when I was having.
Yeah, I don't know anything about running sewer, I mean.
When Pet Paul went in, that was a pretty steep building, but they just cut it, cut it flat onto it.
And they put in a septic, I assume.
Oh, yeah, they got two on septic, yeah. And that's the land next to me, it was ten acres.
I think, like I said, I think the biggest thing is being able, where can we expand that to and give it more ability to put that stuff in?
Well, yeah, I think we, we, we talked about, you know, my idea of senior living. Heading out towards, toward Bennington, by Dollar General area in the fields.
And where's that?
That's up in here, okay, so that's Jackson Crossing, so it's before that.
But it drives right there.
So again, which is here, that's a piece of land that's pretty big.
That's, that's the Roos building right there, so it's everything from here to here.
And so.
And again, there's a, this is all field right here, right back to this brook. All field right back in here, but they only give you this, this much to work with.
But if, if I was a commercial, say I wanted to build an old folks home and stick it here. I could petition the town to tie in, it's right there.
Where does that go? But then because of the way this is set up, this is your, uh, your town zone. And this is residential rule, so you have to, some of the rules want to apply to that, so. We'd have to open this up to make a commercial building area.
So, and that's not even calling it the village center or anything like that, we just wanna maybe make this into. I don't, I, you know, I don't know what the different.
Even, even on the other side of this, this is Pettit's over here, there's a little bit of a swamp here. But there's still land up on the side right here that can be built on, but there's no. You wouldn't be able to do it, it doesn't fit this original plan. That's what this was drawn for, to make a village that's inside village, so the restrictions are more, more restriction when you get back into that.
So this is the sewer service area limit, so I, I wonder why there instead of here. I mean, is that just an arbitrary line? I'm, why, I mean.
That was a setback that they had back then when they put them in. They had certain distances they wanna be from like two hundred foot from certain areas.
Well, this seems like good questions for Darcy to just understand. Patrick Gray, oh, yeah.
Do we have an appointment with her?
All buildable area. These are just small lots, that's a dollar general.
He doesn't like visitors.
I think this was owned by Pettit. This is all Pettit.
All Pettit's here, all Pettit's.
And is this a town road? Oh, this is a private.
Yeah, there's Pettit's, yeah, Pettit Drive, it's all housing, it's up in here now. But there's still area, all this is area, buildable area, up in here, buildable area. There's a small swamp from here, right along here, it's a little bit wet and swampy, but all this is buildable, it used to be a, it used to be a motel right there.
Sewer through there, that probably makes, makes the swamp not much of an issue.
If you put the line, yeah. Cuz you guys, you're, you're, you're in a line, it's wood lines, cuz you can't, can't put a sewer here because of the wet. Didn't connect and run that way.
My friend, that was a bummer.
It's all buildable.
Close downhill. Eight A is Friday.
I just drive right there.
That's just right here.
Yeah, I mean, you can cut back and cut back into a dark green. Cut back into here, hillside.
And go all the way up through here, you think?
Yeah, well, and then it just gets a little more hillside back here. And my land the way up here, so like, this is all hillside, but then it goes back into the backside of the park. There's a couple houses back here.
A lot can happen there.
Problem is when they were putting it in, they went in specific directions, so like, this park had a lot of issues. So they ran straight to that, get to there, and then that's what they centered on, not the rest of this. They just had to run it by here when they ran it, so within two hundred feet of that, when, when they put it in back in two thousand four. The goal was two hundred feet of this line where they wanted to put it is where it can hook up to, after that, I didn't care about. So even though there's a house just off the aside, they didn't, you didn't have to hook up, it had to be, if you were within two hundred feet, you had to hook up.
Two hundred feet, so this is, this is right now, this is, this area here is rural residential. This made it now.
Make a commercial that you can put in.
So maybe they would. So how does it work?
And the lines are right here, so just drop the line in.
If I'm.
And they could hook, somebody could, investor could hook that up.
That's what I was gonna ask, if, if I'm building a, a multi-unit housing thing here. At my expense, could I put in a line and then, you know, see permission from the town, obviously there's a capacity issue and so forth. So it doesn't really, this line is, is just kind of arbitrary.
Just what they put in.
Right, it's, it's.
Again, this line was two hundred foot from it, so that's generally where the line would be. It's probably not a very accurate line, but it's generally two hundred foot. When they came up to Saul and the park, everything was two hundred foot from it.
So if, if my property overlapped this line, but my outflow from my property was within the two hundred feet.
You could hook up.
You could hook up, but we, it's the same problem about capacity, right? So we still have to get permission from the town, whatever.
I mean, if you're only putting it in and you got, say, two, a, a volume for two out home. And they have that capacity already. If you were hooking up to ten, then.
Right, that's, that's why people don't do it.
But if it was a subdivision, they would pay.
Right.
Most likely.
Because putting in that many septic tanks would cost even more.
I mean, that business is whatever it might be, they're, they're gonna pay something to put. Get connected, that's what they would wanna do. Cuz it's gonna, by them connecting to that, puts them in a different area. I mean, cuz right now they'd have to put a system in and it wouldn't pass in some of those areas. But the line going in like that would. Now we'd put them on a different, different level.
But for builders building multi, you know, multi houses, it would pay to hook up to there. And people would, would rather buy something that's up this sewer, rather than do a septic system that can fail in ten, fifteen years from.
So does it then make sense in our plan when we write it? That we highlight areas that we think are ripe for development because they have access to septic.
That's what I would do.
And just put them in the plan so anybody reading it can see, here's an area I could look at, here's an area I could look at, that kind of thing.
Right, and that's, I think with even like the industrial land, when we were laying out, I think they picked out five or something it was. B C R C had five locations that they said were.
They were stingy.
Powerable for industrial. So those, what we do, we're gonna lay those out, pot potential for that. So that we can at least include it as industrial and commercial.
They have all the knocks except for these. It seems like we need to make copies of these and send them to B C R C and say, can you scale this? So that we can overlay.
Isn't that where these came from?
There's a architectural paper that's translucent that we can put over this. And then we can start highlighting that.
Well, I think if we get that, we can get that from B C R C, they might be able to overlay that already.
Right, I'm thinking if we can get a. I don't know how you scan this or whatever, maybe, I mean, you bring it to Williams College, they can probably do anything.
This has gotta be, somebody's gotta have this digital.
Say it can overlay and that would really help the whole process.
We have some copies of this we can mark up. While we're brainstorming.
I would like, I would like a board copy, something we could have right here and leave here, as a copy that we mark up together.
I mean, digital, we can print off more copies anytime we need.
That would be great. There's a lot of village, there's a lot of spaces.
Which, where's three forty six?
This is three forty six here.
So this is the property.
Somewhere's this is a corner.
So this area, this, all this right here.
All could be.
That would be, that would be a nice little.
All the way to Route seven.
Senior community right there.
What's down here?
This is, this is, um, this is like a small farm here.
Yeah, this is, this is the only thing right here.
This Oak Hill School.
Is there just, oh, and right, and the, uh, the ambulance services were right in here somewhere.
Ambulance is right there.
Okay, we have post office and fire department.
That's a legion.
Fire department owns.
Beautiful piece of land. They'll never give it up either. That is a nice place.
Nice piece of.
You guys want something?
The right person could, I'm sure.
They own the post office and they own.
A right person will come in here and say, hey, I want that piece.
I put your here, but he poses.
But they can probably find a lesser space to do that.
They bought that small lot too, the Buddy property. Right, it was a small, it was a small lot Buddy, oh no.
There's fourteen acres down the road.
Across the railroad track.
I mean, it's the same as all that, it's all the return here, it's a good usable area.
Where's Berington Farm?
Well, this says Macmullin here.
Okay, where's the next piece of land though? Fourteen acres.
Is that the one by the river?
An encyclopedia of.
It goes on, it continues on this. The lady in the, uh, that's on the, on the town office, she owns that land.
Julie? Oh, remember?
Not, not Julie, no, the other girl. No, across from Berington's.
Oh, really?
The White House, the big White House.
That's the other side, I know where you're talking about.
Fourteen acres in there where the rock is. That's a nice piece of land.
Yeah, right there with the.
You know, they never hook any septic up, they just blew by it cuz it wasn't for building, but it would be dynamite.
That's right at the base.
The same thing, yeah. It's a location that should be marked.
It should be.
Regardless of they wanna sell it or not, that's not.
Well, somebody should buy it.
Availability is what we're looking at, right? Where is it available to do something?
Be great, yeah, we could certainly have a section where we see these are developable properties.
Very developable.
And the B C R C looked up five locations for industrial. We, we can easily match that with a minimum of five other places that could just be commercial or an excuse or something like that.
I need to go back to those maps and, because they had some new classifications and I'm not sure where the lines are about what you do where.
There's a, there's a lot of. Just around these.
Yeah, this is all, this is all like ledges and. That's why you can't do anything.
Not until you get around to Harts. Uh, that other lady bought that. The old gravel bed.
She bought, she just bought it to close it. Did four hundred thousand for it, one of eight hundred, and she bought it for four. Just to shut it down, she didn't like the dust up there, she didn't like. She lives on the hill.
She was right next to Cash Place, she didn't like that, what's going on.
Well, development might not be that bad. There was a lot of digging and some trash in the land.
Yeah, we got one more.
It was, they were cutting the hill up pretty good.
Yeah, I talked to that guy today and.
But that's the house right here, this.
Trying to get rid of the guy up there.
But again, if you put something in. Yeah, whatever, anyway. We're on the wrong side of the road. So go across. I don't think it goes that far anyway right now.
It's down here soon.
Well, it's all in here, the, the mobile home park, that looks like that's the bottom of it right now.
Is he looking to sell?
Came across right here.
It's, it's in litigation.
And then it continues down.
You know, they wanna buy it. That great stone is always.
If you came down the rest of the way. You could get it all the way down around, so this is developable.
Yeah, the land he owns.
Eventually, they're gonna have problems. It's gonna happen.
And is, is that in the foot zone down there or Stewart's?
Once you break, once you break down into here, all this is.
Think so, yeah. So you don't really want sewer lines.
The beach.
Above the flood zone, do you?
They're locked lines, you shouldn't have any issue with that. When they're dropped in the ground, that's, they're in the ground. Flooding is all gonna be above it. It's saturated and around it, but it's not. It's not like they're gonna wash.
They changed the course of the river right about here, didn't they?
Yes, they did, yeah. Otherwise, they would add a build two, two bridges. So they changed the river there. Where the, uh. Back of the, uh. The hotel, I mean, the hospital. Ran there.
Oh, right, so the, the Southern Remont Health Center doesn't have sewer.
No, it does not, no, nothing down there does, ends with me. They got a good sewer system, you know, they, they don't use a lot either, no, not on weekends, you know, no.
Well.
He loves those, uh, when he calls it systems. Oh, God.
So really we wanna get some overlays and then delineate.
They will fail eventually.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Back in eighteen fifty five.
All right, you get all that taste?
You can't open two notes, right?
You know, you can do this on A I?
That'll be the next thing I can say.
They have it, I'm on the board somewhere and they get done like fifteen minutes, it's done.
Then you added it down to be useful because it's everything anybody said, which is way too much.
I think that was a good, that was a good discussion. That's, that's a good ideas.
Actually, they did that before A I, it's just.
So the update regarding scheduling appointment. With Darcy, uh, that's still pending.
Yeah, I talked to Hannah yesterday about that. Um, she did hear back from Darcy, but she has no answer on the site visit yet. Darcy is on vacation this week, so she is reaching out again next week to get an answer, you know, whether. It can happen or it can't, so. I'll have an update for you for next meeting, I know it's, what, three weeks away now? July goes, but we'll have an update for next week.
August, whatever.
There are people that work in that sewer thing? Oh, yeah, three people. How many? Three. Darcy, her husband, they all came from Massachusetts, running that system over there, so they worked in Williamson.
Oh, so they knew how to do it.
They knew it very well, so two of them came over here and one of the Berington boys works for them. So, that's it.
Would be, is it the fifth?
Yeah, they came from a good experience.
Agenda items.
I put on there to. Have those maps and overlays for you, I, I have to reach out, you know, about getting those, but. I don't see it being a problem, so we should have those for next meeting.
Yeah, we just, we just need to start marking stuff up so we can really keep track of it.
And then I'll get you some extra copies of those. Is there anything else you wanna add to the agenda for next meeting? We're just gonna continue the map, the special review.
Well, we continue the maps.
And we have, we have the word, word copy of the.
It's saved on my computer. Uh, like I said, I'm almost positive she sent it to you, but if you guys don't have it, let me know and I'll resend it.
The one I remember seeing was when she converted from PDF, which had all kinds of goofy stuff in it and she was gonna continue looking. I didn't see one.
I'd say resend it cuz I don't remember an email at all. I don't remember getting one.
Town plan word. This looks good, Hannah, biggest. So this was Fred sent this out.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll all have the same one, which is good. So then for next meeting, if we have the overlays, we can talk about district and stuff. If we don't have the overlays, I don't know if we can.
We can, uh, I would say just have some more discussion on.
More discussion on.
Uh, areas or something like that where we can, where we think we can move to, where we can draw some areas that.
Yeah, if we have copies and we can start dropping stuff, that would be good.
There's fifty one acres up in here, Bob's Park, I mean, up at the, uh. She just died too. I forget her name. I know it well, but, uh, her daughter used to work for me, anyway, it's up there next to, uh. Pratt's Farm up, up at Pratt's Farm.
Oh, yeah.
It's fifty acres up there.
That's a nice gentle slope down the road, hill. It's beautiful up there.
Yeah, nice land, yeah.
So more map discussion?
It's up, up in my area?
No, no.
Up Lad Road.
Off, off to the left, it's a different road. There's about five houses on it, Jackie Mason lives there and my friend Bruce Wade lives up there.
Brookman Road?
Brookman up by Brookman.
Brookman Road, yeah.
Oh, this is before Brooklyn, Brooklyn.
Brooklyn goes up the hill.
Down, much closer to Route seven, going up Lad and there's a right-hand turn up.
Oh, I, I know what you're talking about, yes.
Goes up the hill to the Pratt.
Which, uh, the guy down the lake is still about.
First one on the right, yeah.
Wire.
But that land's open, you know, I don't, I don't know, the girl lives in Troy, I don't know that.
Troy'd love to develop that.
Nice land up there.
Next meeting is on the fifth of August.
So we wanna have this discussion, hopefully markup maps.
No, it doesn't hurt to have ideas, what, what would make good development, or what we like to see, but. Or what we like to see, but we can't make any of that happen.
No, we can't. We can identify it though.
Just identify.
That's all we can do.
Go and look for places we could potentially use.
And the racetrack land is still on the other side of the railroad tracks. Nice piece of the land there, but.
That's gonna be years before. End on that, sadly, but.
You're probably gonna bankrupt, see.
I don't see any reason to, to even think that is industrial, it's never gonna happen. No matter what.
Be a great place for a dirt bike track or something like that, you know?
I've been trying.
I don't, I don't think you could try and put anything anybody would let it.
Not until it turns over.
Those guys that know it kinda like to put one there, yeah.
Still be it.
If it was foreclosed, who's gonna take it? The state? It no longer belongs to Pownell? There's so much water down there, it's getting, do every, every, just beautiful, beautiful water.
Right. That's what the, uh, that plant that was gonna burn the trash, that's why they wanted it.
I wonder, um, when we talk, we're talking about agenda and thinking down the road. We've talked a little bit about the school and we talked about a little bit about making. Try to be, be an independent school, see if we can get our building back. If we involve, we talked about that enough, where if we involve our state representative and if we involve. Cindy and Nelson, they're, they're, they're school board people. They would, they would have more information and, um, the feasibility, trying to, trying to.
And Nygro's a good guy.
I talked to the representative, he's gonna come tonight, but, uh, he was gonna zoom or whatever.
This new, uh, you know, school thing that the state passed, they haven't figured it out.
No, they haven't figured it out yet. There's a lot to be figured out, a lot.
Might be the time to be starting to, starting to work on.
Well, that's an interesting thought, yeah. Before they.
They knew what they wanted to do so bad that they did it. In spite of what, how we voted, you know, so, um, now they don't know what they're, what they're gonna do yet, so it's a time.
So maybe it isn't.
How to tax it, there's so many things that are gonna change.
It happened quick. It happens quick.
Well, that's, that's an interesting point. So, I mean, how do we find out? It's probably talking to Peter Nygro or, or, um, what's his name? Lost his name, but anyway. They were all sitting there in the meetings and maybe could give us some advice if there's even a, an avenue for us to talk about. Taking that back over there.
Nelson, Nelson and Cindy.
We're on the, yeah, on the board, yeah.
They're on the board, yeah.
So they, they might know, know something. You know, Nelson's former state representative.
Yeah, would he be willing to come to one of our meetings and just, let's learn.
At some point, if they reach out and just gather, yeah, gather information, ask questions, we're planning, we gather, have information.
Well, maybe we should reach out to him and see, you know, if, which of the next three or four meetings he might be able to come to.
So many changes are gonna be in the school system.
Well, that's true. But I think Fred's point is, is good, that before they actually lock it down, that might be an avenue where we could. You know, shunt it off.
It might help.
Well, if you wanna, wanna attract families with children.
You gotta have a school.
We don't have, now your kids are gonna get on a bus and they're gonna travel.
Go somewhere else, yeah.
Twenty miles or so. So, yeah, well, maybe not.
It's good. That way, yeah.
It's a good school, Jim, whenever you had, you know, a lot going on.
A lot of acreage too that went with it.
And a lot of expenses, you know, I mean.
Well, yeah. But it's worth it.
It was worth it, yeah.
I mean, with septic, you know, for years we sucked it out. It was building a swamp. Anyone made a lot of money sucking it out. So septic came along. That's why, you know, that's why it went there. To get rid of, you know. Down here was the straight pipes, up there it has a different issue. It was good.
Big project, wow.
Our next agenda item is public comment. Do we have anybody in the public?
Uh, we have one person out there, but nobody has raised.
Not, not, uh, not a, uh. I, I do have a question, um, that's, uh, if that's appropriate. Uh, I'm visiting from Maine, actually, and I heard mentioned the property that, uh. That I wanted to ask a quick question about. Looks like I got. Booted. Hello?
Oh.
You're back.
I'm back, all right, um. Yeah, again, I don't know if this is a normal part of proceedings, but, um.
Yeah, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, sure. My name is Joe Reynolds, um, I'm from Portland, Maine, um, and. I heard, uh, in, uh, the conversation about the sewer maps, um. I heard the, the mobile home park located across from Dollar General mentioned, um, and that fellow's got it for sale. To my knowledge, but, uh. I had a, I had a buddy go by and take a look at it today and just had some questions about the property and I was wondering who to reach out to, to, to find out more.
I talked to him today, the owner, and he, you know, he's got other issues, uh, being fined. There's gonna be a number of fines going towards him and he's got a guy with the, uh, I guess his relative. Sean Mateo owns the other place where it was cleaned up. So he, he really doesn't, uh. It's for sale, but it's not for sale.
Yeah, yeah. No, it sounded like there might be a, a bit of, uh, some. Figuring to do. Is there any insight you can give me now, or who would I talk to to find out more about that?
Well, you know, I guess you'd talk to, uh. What was his name? Pat Gray. Pat Gray owns it.
Right, right. Well, I've talked to him and, uh. Well, he hadn't mentioned anything about this. I actually heard about, uh, fines from you and somebody else, so. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out who's the authority, so.
Well, okay, let's talk to the select person and that's, uh. Mike Gardner's the, uh, the guy that's finding him. So he's the guy to talk to, he's the head of selectmen here and, uh.
He's also zoning.
He's also the zoning administrator.
Okay, zoning and, uh, head selectman, got it. Mike, Mike Gardner, is that right?
Mike Gardner, yeah. Very, uh, very accessible, yeah.
Oh, terrific. Uh, am I gonna find his number on, uh, town site there?
Yes.
All right, great. Well, I think, thank you for a pointer in the right direction. It sounds like there's, uh, maybe.
He's got to find, he's finding them, you know, whatever, and, uh, there'll be some issues if it's sold.
You guys think that it's, uh, I mean, it looks like maybe it's possible to breathe some life back in, there's some stuff that's gotta go, but it. From a zoning perspective, um, maybe Mike's the, the final word, but, uh. Would you imagine it's gonna retain its, its current zoning?
Um, we're not gonna make it worse.
No, we're not gonna make it worse.
Yeah.
What, what is your intention?
Well, I don't know. I got, my best friend lives in Husick Falls, I got another very close friend in, uh. Brattleboro, I've been, you know, like I said, in Maine for a minute and been trying to move to the area and find a multi that I can breathe some life back into. And it seemed like.
That's a good spot.
It seemed like it had good potential, you know, I mean, I know it's, it's got its problems, but it's a great part of the world.
Looks like a guy can handle problems.
You know, I mean, I grew up in, uh, a, a real estate adjacent family, I'm not. I don't mean to make it sound like I'm a developer, but I kinda, I, I, I see what's wrong with it, I see, you know, there's probably some of those gotta go and. Put some new, maybe some new mobiles or some, uh, new pods in there or tiny house or whatever, but. Uh, it seemed like it had a decent amount of land and if someone lived there and actually gave a shit, could be something, so. I guess we'll find out more. I'll talk to Mike, uh, uh, thank you guys for the, for the good pointer and wish you rest, uh, good luck with the rest of me.
Did you say that you looked at the place? Have you done a site visit or?
I have not, but, uh, like I said, my, my, uh, my closest friend who lives in Husick Falls, who's got a bunch of units over in Husick Falls. His father's a property manager, they went over and took a look at it for me to kinda give me a sanity check on what I should be. Thinking about as I would prepare an offer, you know, I, uh, the owner didn't wanna do. Anything through brokers, so, you know, I'd be going to a lawyer and I, it's gonna cost me five thousand dollars to make an offer on the place kinda deal, you know, so. Just trying to get some, uh, heads or tails on it before I go through the process. You guys cut out again.
Okay, we're back.
We're back, guys, sorry.
Sorry, we're having technical, we're having some technical issues.
Actually see you now, that's so exciting.
Hey, all right, um, I can't see you, but it don't matter, I saw you before, um, yeah, so, uh. I don't know where you lost me, but I got a, a buddy whose family, uh, property manager was over in Husick Falls. They got units over there, so I had him go take a spin through today and he said, you know, there's pluses and minuses, there's. There's stuff you gotta do, um.
I, I think, I think that owner, that landowner owns all the trailers on his, on his property. That would be a plus. You won't, you won't have to deal with that.
Some investment in the area is perfect.
Yeah, I think we can do to help.
Yeah.
Oh, good to know. Well, that's, um, that's kinda the attitude I was hoping to hear from the town, um. It sounded like he had some, um, some expansion possibility, there's, I mean, I guess fi- three, five. Acre contiguous plots, so. Wanna make sure it sounds accurate, pass the sniff test here and just keep.
And we welcome the, the investment.
All right, cool. Well, thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, thanks, Kate. I'm gonna dip here, uh, but I'll, I'm sure I'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Entertaining our motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? The hour adjourned.